There ain't no no and there ain't no I can't, no. Ain't happening.
We got a whole party.
It must be important, you got Britain over here.
Jimmy?
My backup.
Mr. Goshlight. I was the only male there.
Good.
Hello, everyone. Like to call to order, the work session, it's a conjunction with the LCD Board and Lawrenceburg City Council. And what it's gonna be, the topic is gonna be, I think, an update on the levy and certification process and other items, I believe. So I'd like to start to get a roll call for the council.
All right, roll call for the council here, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Justin Nopper.
Sir.
Councilperson Tommy Erellet.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Monderick.
Yes, sir.
We got City Attorney Dale Weldon, who was in the house.
He stepped out.
He just walked out that way, okay. Mayor Kelly Malon.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, we've gotta read the, our public meeting announcement before we do every meeting in order to keep our funding for Title VI. As a recipient of federal funds and in support of Lawrenceburg's efforts to ensure nondiscrimination and equal access to all citizens, the city gathers statistical data regarding participants in city activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You're not required to complete this survey. The form is anonymous and will be used wholly for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and ADA. And that survey is in the back of the room if you so choose to fill it out. So, Mr. Seymour, I guess you're gonna give us an overview of what we're talking about here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Kelly, for setting this up. Thank everybody that came in here for taking time out of their day to meet us here. I just wanna introduce John Adele, been working with him since 2011, 2012. John Stone in the audience with him, he's one of his engineers. We also today have two representatives from the Corps of Engineers. We have Claudia Collins.
I told you.
And she's my contact. And then we have a new 408, David Lesowski, that we worked with before in the past. He had a job and then he's moved up. So this is what we got today. And the one thing I wanna stress to you is, John, God, he's gonna give you an update, just like we said. And what I'm looking for here today is, is if anybody's got any questions, when he's ready, please ask. Anything you got to ask, just ask. And if there's, we're gonna try to keep this short for you guys as far as we're concerned. But I want you to know that we're also willing to stay here and talk to you guys and answer questions as long as you need us to. So this meeting is for you to find out what we've been doing and basically where we're at. So I'm gonna let John take over here.
Thanks, Paul. I'm gonna hand out, copy these slides, you have those in front of you in case you can't see them.
Thank you. There you go.
All right. Well, I've been asked to come here today to give you kind of a, this is also part of public education, but a little bit of update on what's been happening. A little bit of background on the levies because we often find that folks don't know everything we're doing. What are we actually doing, the work we're doing to make sure your levies protect the town? So we're gonna go through and give you a little bit of update, tell you a little bit about ourselves as well. We're an earth sciences and engineering firm out of Indianapolis. And I'm gonna give you an overview today on the levy system. And just a little introduction, I'm gonna talk a little bit about levies and the Lawrenceburg levy system itself and current status. And a little, just a highlight about certification and accreditation process. So you understand what my role is in this as someone who will certify your levy. This, I wanna just bring out two basic federal requirements. The certification happens by a professional engineer who I have been designated as that for the levy. And I, part of my requirement is to make sure the levy meets certain standards. That the data is accurate, that we generate and that the analysis meets failing professional standards with sound practices. And then protective of your hundred-year storm and flood event that happened. If I certify, if you certify the levy, once it's certified and reviewed by the Corps, FEMA accreditation can happen. It basically says, hey, the levy's certified and it's operated, operated and being maintained appropriately in order to satisfy a requirement. So, you're looking at the guy and the company that's gonna try to certify the levy in order for FEMA accreditation to occur. I just give you a real quick summary of our team. Lot of engineers and a professional geologist on our staff. Luke has got, we have Purdue backgrounds and Notre Dame and Ohio State backgrounds. We also have a member of our team that's a kind of an expert modeler because this, what I wanna say is, this levy is one of the most complicated levies in the United States to deal with. Why is that? We'll get into it, but it surrounds your town. It has, it has a series of relief wells that add complications to how much water is being moved around and pumped out. A series of pump stations. So it's a challenge. And why were we selected too, I wanna say that, 'cause you're kinda with me, I hate this, just an engineer coming to talk to you. But we were selected because this is all about evaluating the possibility of failure of the levy under extreme events. And so you want people who know a little bit about failures. And so some of our background, I put pictures up here just to show you a failed highway system. First thing I looked at as an engineer when I got out was the failure of a highway along State Road One on the way to Lawrenceburg. Back when I had dark hair in my beard.
Hey, John, not to interrupt, but would you prefer us to ask questions as you go or at the end?
As you go.
Okay.
So just, hey, you know, and so we could back up, just feel free to just.
I've got a couple.
Yeah.
Has the levy ever been certified?
No.
Ever been, so actually has never been certified or accredited then?
You're asking me, this is the detail about where we are with the FEMA process. But we are, we are currently, and we have a court of persons here too, of how they view this levy. Maybe it's worthwhile to say how the Corps views the levy status right now.
Okay, we need, if, hey, guys, if, can we go to the podium with, we're trying, we're gonna record, we're recording this?
Sure.
I mean, if you have something, you know, more to say or something, just so everybody knows.
Please.
I'll say too, that that's a little bit of a complicated question because FEMA has changed the way that they do their accreditation. A lot of the current laws that are in place associated with accreditation in FEMA didn't come about until the 2000 timeframe.
Okay.
So there was confirmation by FEMA and the Corps that the levy was designed and built to do what it was supposed to do prior to that timeframe. But you guys are trying to meet standards that were passed by FEMA in the 2000 timeframe.
Got it, makes sense. The second part of my question is, how long have we been, have you all been working on accreditation?
We've been tagged since 2012, as far as our process of this, going through the process, so about a decade before then. And I've got some of this if you wanna.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, why does it take so long?
I would, I'll tell you, if you don't know the answer by the time I'm done, I'll come back to that.
I should've waited to ask my question.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a long process because not a lot, there was a lot that wasn't done for decades here.
Got it, I knew that.
So we, we, over the last decade, you'll see, have done a lot of things, including investigations, rehab of your relief well system, a number of things that needed to be done in order to then reach the point this year that we're gonna be.
You're fine, keep going, I'm sorry.
Well, I just have this slide because this is all about making sure your levies don't fail. A complicated levy system. I put these on here because you see the, why were we selected? The Apollo lunar module that landed on the moon was designed by a Purdue professor, the landing pad so that it wouldn't fail. It would've been catastrophic. He was also the guy, only American who was on the Leaning Tower Pisa Committee to solve that problem. He also wrote the book, this fat book called Foundation Engineering, from which many of the analysis we're doing on the levy was, were published. I say all that because that's, that's the DNA that I got from Purdue, looking at failures. And when I came out with this, my Purdue background, I spent, I've spent a lot of my career looking at failures. Why do things fail? This is what this is about, not allowing this levy to fail under significant concerns. And so why I got pulled in is that background I had and the Corps, at that time, the Corps, some people in the Corps knew the background and encouraged that kind of search. I just wanna kinda tell you a little bit about us. So, in case you don't know what a levy is, it's basically, you've got an embankment that was constructed under controlled conditions that were placed on natural geology of Lawrenceburg. There's a water side, obviously, and a dry side. There's a series of relief wells to relieve pressures under high water vents. So when the water comes up on the water side, it exerts pressure and seepage happens, oops, seepage happens through the embankment and below the embankment. And the relief wells take that pressure and remove water and reduce the pressures in order for that levy to remain safe. You have one of the systems with the largest number of relief wells in the country, just to let you know.
What are the numbers of the relief wells? How many do they have?
About 170, plus or minus, you'll see, but we'll get into a little bit of that, a lot of relief wells. That's just a map showing, the pink shows where all the greatest number of levies are around Longview, Mississippi River and California. Some other statistics, there's 100,000 miles of levies in the United States. And the last grade that was given to them was a D minus by the American Society of Civil Engineers, so most are not in great shape. Why? Because when they were built, they were kind of ignored for decades. And people didn't put enough money into them to break, keep them up to speed and to make sure they were safe. So that's kind of the state of levies in the United States. And of course, I hope all you, if I gave you a test, would know the history of levies in this town. Maybe every city councilman should hit this test about why we have a levy, the fact that we had big events in the late 1800s. In 1913, that basically overtopped the levy, cut through it and caused a lot of damage. If you don't know that, Paul had a great book he put together about the levy system that he'd be happy to give everybody.
What's our levy rated by the American Association of Civil Engineers?
It's not, they don't rate them particularly levy per levy, it's overall as a, as a levy system. I can, I could look back at the Corps of Engineers and see what, how we're rated, but I think in general, in general, we're well above the average as far as the fact that now we've taken care of doing a lot of things in the last decade, and we'll get into this. But I'm just saying overall, before we did all that, well, we'll get into that. I'll answer that question in about two slides, if that's okay. The bottom line is, we've, we've done a lot of work to bring the levy up to make sure it's performing well. More floods, 1937 flood, that flood caused the Corps to say we need to build a levy here, that they, under their supervision, and that's what happened. Basically, come on, the levy we built, you know, had 1940, 1944 construction, about 18,000 feet long, 44 feet high. And if you don't know, we have access openings through the levy, four traffic gates, two railroad gates, five pumping stations, 173 pressure relief wells. And, you know, if you haven't, if you don't know where the relief wells are, you can see by this diagram that they dot and they surround the entire city. Over the last decade, there's been a number of rehabilitation, finding the wells, the wells were not even located. And then rehabilitating the wells over a series of events. This is a feature map, just in case you don't know, that's in the slides, that basically shows you where the pump stations are along the western side of town and shows you the access and gates of the town. Those are important to have operational because they control water coming in, they control how much water, you know, your city is a big bowl. Every drop of water that comes in your city has to be pumped out, every drop of it. Nothing drains by gravity outside of the city. That's maybe obvious, but it, it's important to say because that's how we have to keep the city safe. We have to take the water during a flood and pump it out, anything that seeps and it gets released by the relief well, discharged by the relief well, so.
Sir.
Yeah.
I've got a question, John, you said, you know, when a flood comes in, actually you said it's a bowl, so could it actually tell from the inside? Could we flood internally for hydrated water?
You'll, you'll see this, in a high water vent, the water comes up around, it's like, it's like a moat of water around the city. And water can come through the embankments as well as underneath the embankments. When it comes underneath the embankments, the relief wells take that excess pressure, take that water and send it to your stormwater system. Or they send it out to your northern low area there and direct it to the pumping stations and they pump it out. So some of that water is from water coming up.
Correct. So we're pumping every day then?
We're pumping every day. There's some wells that are situated in this area that, that create water every day and we have pumping every day in the pumping station. In 2018, we almost had no precipitation during that whole event. So all the water that we were pumping from those pumping stations was coming basically from the underflow.
So, so John, prior to, to a decade of identifying problems and, and I guess, many years of neglect on the relief wells, what kept us dry when all the neglect of the relief wells was going on and, and such?
Well, the original design of your levy was over, it was designed originally for a, for a level of the Ohio River that was much higher than the events that you had experienced during that time. So from 1944 onward, and we have a, let's see if I got, yeah, actually, let's see if that's, no. I'll show you, there's a series of the highest waters we've had and they've all been below a certain level. One of those was close to the 100-year level. And, and one of those in the 40s, when they, after they built the levy and they had the first really high water vent, they found two areas that your, that your city had problems with. And guess what? They installed more relief wells in those areas. So to the northeast and to the southwest, there were a group of wells were installed to handle the pumps they installed in 1940 after this was built. So it was an observed thing, after, that, we found this in records provided by the Corps. After they observed those, that flood of, or that, those high water vents, they needed some extra help, so they did additional relief wells.
But, but you mentioned that there was many, many years of neglect of these wells.
That's right. From that time till, till basically 2011, people didn't look at it at all. And so what happens is relief wells over time. I can show you pictures, in fact, I have one picture in here. Gets crusted up, you can imagine, plugging some of the holes and the screens. And they needed to be cleaned out and refurbished. So if you haven't, you obviously have seen gates coming in and out of the city. If you haven't been to a gate opening and closing, I know that a lot of your high, your kids in the city have seen those, if you've not been to one, it'd be great for the city council to actually practice watching those go in and out, they're very interesting to see. Also, the pump stations, if you've never visited one of the pump stations, they have significant pump capacities. And that's another thing over the last decade that's paid particular attention to, is maintaining the pumps and maintaining the documentation records for those pumps to operate. I'll tell, talk a little bit more about that, that we have that series of pump stations. This was that kind of summary that you were talking about, what did we, what's happened since the levy was built? And this shows all the different flood elevations and levels of concern. The original, at the very top, you can see that the 1937 flood for this particular datum, the elevation's 500.7. That's the very top kind of 1937 level. That's, that's what it was designed to take. Of course, this was before the Markland Dam and the series of dams were put along the river, so that's changed some of the dynamics. But that's what the, that's what the levy was designed for and that's what the Corps actually wants it to still perform at, just by the way. Whereas you can see down in the FEMA level, down the 100-year flood, you can see FEMA elevation to 490. That's the level that we have to show for FEMA is performing satisfactorily without any kind of problem with the levy. And then you can see the other dates of levies, the 1945, that one right after it was built, caused the additional, 45 and 48, caused the additional relief wells to be put in place. And 1964, those were all between about a 50 and 100-year flood elevation, so those were the high ones. Then we had 1997, was a 35-year frequency flood. And then in 2018, you saw Greendale, how much that was, water was there at the time, 2018. That's a 15-year flood. So, and then down at FEMA, down 10 years lower. So this shows you all kind of the history of how we've experienced high water events. So, just to talk about failures real quick, so we understand what we're talking about. Levies can fail by a number of methods. Overtopping, which happened in 1884, 1913 and 1937 floods before the present levy was built. So how, why does the levy fail? The water level came up, went over, and when it goes over the levy, it starts cutting into the levy. And it's like, like a knife, it just starts eroding the levy when it overtops the seepage. It can also flood by breaching, which is, which happens after overtopping, where it starts to erode. And then by seepage, excessive seepage, you see at the bottom picture, you see seepage going underneath of the levy or through the levy. And that can actually create preferential pathways. And if any of you have seen over the years, maybe sand boils, where you see water coming up and the movement of soil from beneath the levy toward the dry side, it can actually create cavities and collapse of the levy through excessive seepage underneath of the levy. So those are the things we have to make sure the levy protects against, especially this idea of seepage, as far as our concern is one of the larger concerns here. Just wanna show you a couple pictures of levy failures that happened, right? Katrina, 2005, kind of woke the Corps up and a lot of people because we had a lot of levy failures. And you noticed a lot of the work that was done with your levies happened after 2005 or so. But just some pictures of levy failures. The second picture shows levy failures from the excessive seepage. In the upper right, there's a sand, you can see sand being piled up and taken from beneath the levy. So it does happen. Now, what happens if it would happen here? What would happen here if the levy did fail? This is a picture, but just a topo map. Topo map showing blue and purple areas are the low spots, you know that in Lawrenceburg. This, the bluish and purplish areas are the low spots. So if the levy fails, what happens? The water rushes in and fills up the low spots, right? Those are the areas that it would fail. And in fact, I put this FEMA map on here, the FEMA is the, is the flood insurance rate map that shows which area, the area of Lawrenceburg that's protected by the levies. And so that's, that area there with the cross attaching is all protected area from the levies. But if there's a failure, and this is the next map, this is called the annihilation map. What would happen if?
Does it, does it affect flood insurance at all that we're not certified or accredited, or does that not matter?
It will matter at some point.
Well, like, people who own houses and businesses in the downtown or in the protected area, because we're not certified or accredited, does that affect them, should they be worried about that?
If we're not able at some point, at some point in the future to get accreditation, it could affect the fact that you need flood insurance.
You're saying we've never been certified or accredited?
You just, yeah, don't jump in.
So right now, Lawrenceburg is considered provisionally accredited, so like how David was saying earlier, back before these new rules, FEMA and the Corps had come to a decision about Lawrenceburg, so they made this provisional accreditation. So right now, you are on a FEMA map, on a firm map, as being provisionally accredited. However, FEMA is saying all of these provisionally accredited levies need to go through this process that John is doing to be officially accredited. So right now, you are on the map as provisionally accredited, but that will eventually go away if you aren't able to get full accreditation.
Is that the same with the Army Corps, do we have a provisional certification?
We have a completely different, you know, we work with FEMA, but our, and that certification probably isn't the correct word. We have our own program that doesn't necessarily, it doesn't relate to FEMA accreditation at all.
Are we provisionally approved by the Army Corps or just by FEMA?
By FEMA.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Corps, the Corps' program, we have, it's PL 8499, it's our rehabilitation program. So what eligibility in that program allows for is if there's a flood and the levy system itself is damaged because of the flood, then Lawrenceburg would be eligible for federal money to make repairs to the levy. But it doesn't have anything to do with flood insurance or repairs to any city infrastructure, residential or commercial buildings or anything. It's just associated with eligibility for Army Corps rehabilitation funds to repair the levy that was damaged because of the flood.
Would we be disqualified from certain funds that would go to homes and businesses?
So, yeah, so the Corps' program, we do annual and periodic inspections to verify eligibility for that. And the Lawrenceburg Conservancy District is the sponsor that attends those inspections with us. They are the ones that are responsible for making those, whatever the inspection finds, the repairs that are necessary to stay eligible.
But like if the whole city floods, God forbid, everyone needs to repair their houses and businesses, there'd be some funds that we couldn't, we'd be disqualified from, people couldn't get.
Right, if the accreditation process, if Lawrenceburg fails to get their levy accredited and FEMA removes the city from its flood insurance rate maps, then individuals would have to pay whatever the full cost of flood insurance is to the national flood insurance program. And we don't want to be subsidized or whatever. All of that's.
Okay, a couple questions I got. What, so what is, what is keeping FEMA from saying tomorrow that, you know, these provisional whatever is over? I mean, time is of the essence, right?
It is, and unfortunately FEMA doesn't work super fast, I don't know if it's unfortunately or fortunately. And they don't give great timeline, so I'm not sure when our last meeting was with FEMA, Paul might remember.
We, and I don't know if you saw the phone call or not, I know I got a few records it was, probably about a year ago, we, we got calls from FEMA and they let us know that. Probably about a year ago, we, we got calls from FEMA, um, and they let us know that, you know, hey, we're gonna start this accreditation process up. We're getting hold of you guys, we're letting you know. And when we call you back, the clock's gonna start ticking. That's been about a year ago. I didn't know very far from calling me back, but we've been, as John said, that same comment was made when I got elected to the board in two thousand twelve, when EB was in charge. I can remember, I can remember meetings that, that went the same way, right? The same thing went on, but we never got that call. So now they come in and they're talking to you.
Why wouldn't we be in a hurry though? I mean, why wouldn't we be in a hurry? I mean, if they, we could blame it on FEMA, but if something bad happens, it affects us, it's not, they don't suffer, we do. I mean, shouldn't we be in a hurry?
They're not gonna walk in the door, Dale, and they're, they're not gonna say, we're, we're gonna make you buy flood insurance. What they're gonna walk in the door is, is, and we've been told this, is they're gonna say, okay, what's your plan? What have you been doing? We got a whole lot. We got a whole lot that we've been doing, we got a whole lot of reports, we've got a, we've, we've got a good rating from the Corps and we're ready for that phone call. However, you know, when they make that phone call, the way I understood the phone call, it was gonna be eighteen months. There's a time period that we're gonna have to come up with a plan and implement it and put it forward. Uh, it's not gonna be, hey, I'm calling you today, you're off of the program type of thing. It, it's, they're, they're gonna work with you. We've been told that. However, I, I've been surprised I haven't had the call, but we've been working on this since the last phone call in two thousand twelve. And that kind of answers your question about why does it take so long? It's because FEMA's never, and I don't want them to. I don't want them to call me up and say, hey, you, you got six months. Um, I, I need, I need to keep things going or I need them to feel good about us the way they do right now, I think.
And that, I, I, that sounds, uh, that sounds encouraging, um, that they're not just gonna come in and turn it off, you know, right away. Uh, I guess my, my next question is, is, uh, John, uh, or, or the Corps, what is the timeline? When's the end game? When's the accreditation?
If we go through the rest of the thing...
I gotta, I gotta start looking ahead.
And I'll, I'll add, part of the, you know, when will you get that call? It really, it just once they get to start updating, or updating a lot of maps across the country. So it's really when they get, when they get to start updating your map, that's when they're gonna be more, you have eighteen months, we're working on it. And unfortunately, they don't give us those timelines either. So it, it really, they are good, they'll work with people, they'll, yeah, they're never gonna call and say, okay, if you don't submit this tomorrow, you're removed. They're keeping us updated, they're keeping LCD updated, but they're not great at updating you on a regular basis on where they are on your map.
So, so I don't work for FEMA, obviously, I work with our Corps engineers, but we work hand in hand a lot. And essentially what's happened is, uh, the last time that Congress made FEMA go through a big update of all of their flood insurance rate maps was in the nineteen eighties. Um, run the nineteen eighties to the early two thousands, uh, they were still using hard maps, um, that had to be changed by hand. In the early two thousands, what Congress did was they said, you guys need to start changing these maps to digital maps so that the public can access them and understand what's going on. Um, because when you buy a house, one of the things that, uh, most banks do as part of that loan process is verify on the flood insurance rate maps whether or not you have to pay flood insurance where your house is located.
Right.
So anyways, Congress knows that as part of the National Flood Insurance Program, that those maps need to get updated. They passed a law right before Katrina happened that said, you guys need to do this digital flood insurance rate map updates. And over the last basically ten years, you know, there have been various laws that FEMA has passed, regulations that they've been working through in order to change how, how all of that happens. There have actually, the LAMP process, which Lawrenceburg, Dearborn County went through, uh, as part of FEMA's process, um, they were one of the pilot projects for FEMA. I think there were only like twenty-five pilot projects across the country. Um, and that LAMP process was started because what happened was they were going to some cities across the country and saying, all of a sudden, your levy, uh, doesn't need accreditation and so we're removing it. And there was congressional pushback, uh, against FEMA that they shouldn't, uh, remove that as rapidly as they were. And so FEMA had, had to revise their language. Um, they came up with this additional, uh, study process. So to answer your questions about why it's taken so long, um, it's a very difficult thing FEMA's trying to do. There's been congressional laws, as we all know, Congress, uh, is not the most effective organization. Um, but, uh, they, they are working through that process. They've been dealing with communities like Lawrenceburg that have pushed back on the way that this stuff gets handled and studied and analyzed. And so it is a long process, it has taken a long time. But, um, that is good for places like Lawrenceburg because it gives you guys an opportunity to really study what's going on with your system, find out what changes need to be made and, uh, move that to the levees concerned.
What's the percentages of levies in the United States that are accredited through FEMA? What's the percentages of levies in the state of Indiana that's accredited or certified by the Army Corps?
I don't know. Certified in the state of Indiana? Can't, you guys might know.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have levies that are accredited. Um, I know...
Accredited and not certified.
Yeah, they, yeah. Um, I couldn't answer that question from the Corps standpoint. I know I can speak a little bit intelligently about Louisville District. There's at least three other districts of Army Corps that covers, cover levies within the state of Indiana. Um, you're saying, uh, well, but within our district, I would say, um, you're looking at maybe the, the, where you're fifty percent range. Um, I mean, there, it's, it's a tough question to answer because some levies that the Corps has constructed were not constructed to the FEMA-based flood elevations. So they're actually below that, so they don't, they can't be accredited.
Sure.
So, um...
Okay.
Maybe while we're up here, I don't want to put you guys off the spot, but, you know, maybe for, for the council, just indicate the process you've been going through with, with the Conservancy District and the process we've been doing and interacting with you so they are aware of how much dialogue we've had with you conserving overhead. Is that...
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so I've had this role for a little over two years now. Um, I have nine other levies, so, you know, Lawrenceburg is one of my nine. And I will say, the work that they are doing is, they're doing a lot of work, a lot of really good work. They're working towards these, um, you know, part of it is the FEMA accreditation, but working with us. They're doing these analyses that other levy systems don't do a lot of the time, they're fixing things. Um, you know, we're doing relief well evaluation reports. They've produced a really awesome report that we actually had to go to a different district to get a good expert to review. We've been working with them constantly on that. They're doing ponding area analysis, um, they've been efforts to get those gravity drains that are submerged inspected. They're doing a lot of work, I think, I think they're on the right track. I think if FEMA called tomorrow and said, you have eighteen months, I think they're in the place they could do that again. You know, we always, we don't necessarily want FEMA to do that, but I think that they are pushing towards it.
It's eighteen months, does that just start the trigger of coming up with the plan? Or is that, they want you to have a...
I don't think that's been decided quite yet.
Okay.
And that, and that's not been decided by FEMA, is the way I understood it.
Okay. What are, what are, what are cities doing that don't have any money? Or even Conservancy Districts or flood control districts that don't have any money? That's probably why they're not, they're not able to do any of this.
Yeah, I mean, there, that's definitely the case.
Carter, they, they look for grant funding a little bit more, we encourage it. I mean, there are, there are other sources to funding if you're not getting it regularly through taxes or whatever means. But it, it makes it hard on levies, that's no doubt, that the funding, if they have less, to, to go through these processes.
Paul, you might be able to answer this then, makes a good point. Have you guys looked at any, uh, grants?
We don't know what we're gonna do yet, so we've just been studying.
Okay.
Once we, once John comes, you're gonna have your problems and then you're gonna have your, your options and solutions. The ponding area analysis, once we're done and we know what we have to do, but, but we have made attempts and Albert was part of those, I don't remember the name of it, but we got turned down. Um, you usually have to have a, a drawn up and shovel-ready project. And right now, we're all, it's all in the brain and thinking and studying to see what we have to do.
I mean, is there any grants out there? And I don't know if, maybe you don't know, but for coming up with the feasibility plan, the, you know, the, the plan to move forward? So you could be, you could be using that money to pay John to come up with the, the plan? Is there grants out there for that?
I'm gonna be honest, I'm not, I'm not sure, um, I don't know if you know this specifically. I think they're more action-based, but I don't think we should look into it.
How much is it to develop a plan like this?
We're, we're in the midst of it. We're, we're being paid right now to, to do that process. Maybe if we get through the rest, you'll see a little bit more, uh, of where we're heading and then, but it's, you know, you're talking several, you're, you're talking substantial, you know, it depends on how much needs to be done. If your fix is twenty million, is a percentage of that twenty million, come up with a plan and do it because it's more complicated. If there's smaller projects, then, you know, you might have a hundred thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, that's the deal. Depends on the magnitude of your fix.
But they spent, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys have spent millions on fixes and, and things like that. I mean, over the, over the last decade or whatever.
This group, since it's been formed, I'm gonna say for twenty years, has spent millions. You know, you, you, uh, you've now got a town that has all new, pretty much new floodgates, uh, millions of dollars. You used to take two or three weeks to set your floodgates up. Now we can close them in, in, uh, half a day, um, with volunteers. And we've got volunteers running, we've got pump stations and just, just for an instance, uh, about what, Jared? Two months ago, we put a new pump in. We spent a hundred thousand dollars on a pump, stuff like that. Uh, just turned some, some drawings in the Torrey, we had a sluice gate pop on us on an exercise. I wouldn't doubt that that's gonna be a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fix. It is very expensive to run a, to run a Conservancy District in our flood control. Um, and to have engineers that are, you know, a lot of the things, the one thing I wanna stress is, is John's working on this, uh, I don't know how many hours a week he puts in in Indianapolis, but the modeling and the things that we have to turn into the Corps to talk to them on a constant basis. It's, you know, we, we spend a lot of money.
The relief well rehab, uh, initially was, I don't know, three million dollar contract, they can't, I'm just throwing, several million dollars to rehab the relief wells. But then you go back and there's a cycle to keep them clean. We didn't rehab them for decades, but now we're in a five-year cycle. So we have the plan to, to do the rehab. Well, we're studying the relief wells to see, maybe we don't have to do that as often. And we're gathering the data to kind of make that perhaps, uh, go a little further out to save money if we can.
Preventive, preventive maintenance, yeah.
We can keep asking, but I just, so here was, here was, if we had a failure, how much of the city would, would flood if it was at four eighty? And you can see, and this was put in as part of your emergency preparation, uh, plan in order to know where people could go and access points during an actual flood and if there was a breach. That's a four eighty. Two thousand eighteen, uh, that's the two thousand eighteen flood, four eighty. So if you're, if you're, uh, if the levy had been breached during two thousand eighteen, that's how much of the city would have been flooded. So just to give you an idea. So the challenge is, so I'm gonna go rapidly go what we've done because we've done, I wanna give you the knowledge that we continue and have done a lot and are doing a lot. We've had some challenges because of the length of the levy and the geologic complexity, the fact that no one took observations for decades about how it actually performed in these other events, just limited data, and, uh, the construction maintenance of the relief wells. So, uh, those were some of the challenges. This list, Lawrence activities, just is a real basic list of what's happened over the last decade. Investigations, geotechnical engineering studies to look at your levies, uh, were done. The relief well rehabilitation and testing, three phases of that actually, three different kind of efforts from two thousand eleven, two thousand eighteen. An important thing that you don't know that we've done is we, we're monitoring water continuously around Lawrenceburg. We put thirteen transducers in, in pismeters and, and relief wells and they continuously monitor the water levels beneath the city. And also, we put in a gauge station at Tanner's Creek to correlate the Ohio River water levels with those water levels. Why is that important? Because in two thousand eighteen, we have the data from that flood event. And we now can predict what would have happened in two thousand eighteen and then project it to the hundred-year high water event. Also levy maintenance, there's a SCADA system. Do you know what a SCADA system is? It's kind of a control system for the pump stations that were put in. That's significant help to make sure that during a flood event, your pumps can come on and off and be controlled by a smaller staff. And currently, we're finished, we're, this year, we're finishing the seepage evaluation and interior drainage study. Uh, so lots of work that's gone on. This is an example of a little bit of what the relief wells, finding the wells, monitoring the elevation, surveying those in and cleaning them out and testing them. After you test them, you know how much water they can produce during a high water event. Um, here are thirteen locations for monitoring, continuous monitoring of water levels in the Tanner's Creek gauge locations. So this is, this is going on continuously. And here's a set of readings that, uh, we haven't published yet, but these are a bunch of squiggles, but they show what happens to your water level during different events. And you can see the two thousand eighteen event on the left, how, how water levels in these various pismeters went up with the Ohio River and down. And this data is allowing us to, to predict and to do the engineering for, well, what happens in a hundred-year flood event. Having this data that's never been gathered before, we've had it going for five years or so, that data is important because it's, it's gonna tell you whether you need to do something or not. If you don't need to do something, you don't wanna spend millions doing something that you don't need to do. So that's, that's something that's been added in. And then now, what we're doing now is, is this seepage analysis to know how much seepage during a high water event is coming in and that will be ultimately discharged to your pump stations. And I'll show you, uh, so one thing I want to talk about, and this is probably of interest to all of you, is, um, we talked about, we talked about development within Lawrenceburg, right? Uh, the interior ponding analysis will give you the area that, that given a hundred-year precipitation event and/or a hundred-year flood event, whether you can construct new development in a certain area.
John, can you explain what is a ponding area maybe they need to know? Or do you have a map?
I, I have it. I, I would get to a good, good point.
I can hear him jumping, let you breathe in.
No, that's fine.
That's okay. That's, that's a huge, it's ponding area analysis that we're doing.
It is, it is. Also, what's interesting is if any new development increases the water that goes to your storm sewer system and ends up ultimately needing to be pumped out at your pump station. If a new development increases drainage and water quantities into the sewer system, that's not a good thing. It's taking up the capacity your pumps need during a high water event for the, for the water coming from the high water event and not from development. So that's a key, a key thing. By the way, in the two, two significant developments, the Event Center and the Whiskey...
River Apartments.
River Apartments, those were critically analyzed by us to evaluate would they have a negative impact on the community and what can be done to make sure it didn't have any impact or actually improved it. And in both cases, we were able to come up with a record... And in both cases, we were able to come up with recommendations to actually improve in those areas, the water going into your, 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 your storm sewers and therefore, you're, they didn't add negatively to, to the, the system.
Do they both have retention ponds then?
The, the Whiskey has a retention clawing beneath the parking lot.
Okay.
That was sized and it fills up with water during a, a rainfall event, holds the water until it fills all the way up and then releases it at a given elevation. And that, that actually improved the drainage. So that one does. The, the Event Center, we got into the design beneath the, the Event Center is a subfloor drainage system. They had, they had to take out something like three relief wells from, from the drainage, from the Event Center. And we had to demonstrate to the core that taking those wells out could be made up with the sub drainage system of the Event Center and actually could take out more water than the relief wells if there was a high water event. So we had to submit an analysis. So in that case, it's the ability of, of the Event Center to, to at least match what was there and improve before, so made that area.
So they're still capturing some of the rainwater and allowing it to seep into the earth as opposed to putting it into the storm sewer?
In that case, not as much as the Whiskey, but, but our concern there at that time was if you took out those relief wells, could water just come up and not be controlled? And the Event Center was designed to control that coming out, to bring the water out. I, I can't say whether more water, I'm trying to remember whether more water will be held back from that, it was compared to Whiskey. Whiskey, we, was a newer, more recent one, so.
But any development ideally would be a net neutral where you would try to capture some type of retention, whether it be underneath the development to allow that to drain, absorb.
That's correct. And I would tell you, and get into the city of Lawrence for regulations, but I think a lot of cities require you to reduce it to, and I think your particular city doesn't, says there's a net zero. I'm not sure that's.
Or is it net zero?
What? It's net zero.
One of your events?
I'm not sure that's the best choice for this city. I think if you have any development, you should improve what you have rather than, even though, I understand that's.
I think that's, you can change our storm plan, MS four coming out.
I, I think, I think having input from the, from the conservancy dealing with the, the other issue with this is important because it's all tied together. So the other thing I would say with future development, and we had this case with Whiskey River, is that we had foundations that had to go through to, to place that on a good foundation. And it had, those had to penetrate a clay layer that is above where all the water would flow from the river. And we had to be very careful on the kind of foundations that were used so that there weren't seepage paths along those foundations that come up and, and add water to the city. And so these, I think are, has pile foundations which you can pressurize and keep those flow pathways from coming up. So a lot of detailed work had to be done on the foundation. But the bottom line is new development, you don't want to put a three story basement and take out all of your protective clay layer so that then there could be future water coming out. And we've had that problem down, one time with, for those relief wells down in the ponding area that, not relief wells, the.
You're talking about the.
Retention pond? Retention pond, ballpark.
They, they were.
De-watering wells.
De-watering wells that were put in, the dimension became floating wells and.
Active wells.
Water all the time. So that's what you, you don't wanna put holes in this clay layer that we have in Lawrenceburg without tight control. So I just wanted to say that since I know development's an important thing for the city. Finally, I wanna talk a little, just at this end here, I got just one more slide I think, about this interior ponding study. What we've done and completed is a complete surface water runoff from a hundred year storm, adding seepage in and knowing where all the water's going in Lawrenceburg during this event. And, and that creates this area that's purple, the low lying areas, if, if during those events, that fills up with water. If that fills up with water, that's called a ponding area and you obviously don't necessarily wanna put a brand new building in a ponding area because it's gonna receive water during that time. So that, this shows you along the north side, how the water actually, because it's surface water, comes through a series of drainage swales and down to, to, to the south of the pump station. The rest of the southern part of the city, you're getting storm, storm water in the storm sewers heading in the same direction.
Is this based on a hundred year rain event?
Well.
When you, when you, when you extrapolate the ponding area out that far, is what's?
That, that is general. Here is, I'll give you a hundred year rain event. Here's a hundred year rain, rain event. We, we, I have draft on this, could be able to publish this yet, I don't have it. But this is what happens. You have a hundred year rain event, where the maximum ponding area is, the results from that event. The thing that's happened in Lawrenceburg, and this is related to development, since the last time the ponding study was done to the present, decades, you know.
I mean, where's the last ponding study? Yeah, I mean revise the.
Ages.
Early ages.
Early ages.
From the early ages to the present, the amount of area, area or volume you can store has decreased significantly in Lawrence. What, what happens when that happens due to development? That means if you have a rainfall event, it goes down, it fills up and it then floods larger areas. Cause it doesn't have as much pond, ponding area depth, volume to hold the water. So, so the consequence of, of bad development is removing your ponding area so that you can keep that for major high water events or storm events. So anyway, this is, those are the locations from.
John.
Agent. Question.
You're talking about the storage there. So the yellow is the top, per system, all that water comes through, it gets pumped out of remedial, is that correct?
All the water from here gets pumped out from the pumping stations.
Now, was the system designed that way?
Yes.
So I thought it had a sluice gate at the levee that allowed.
Are you talking about the northern part?
The long, yes.
Yeah, that, that's, that was closed.
Yeah, but I mean, the system was designed according to this operation on the design to go both ways. So if you lost the flow coming on the orange or yellow, it would go out to the fairgrounds and be pumped out of US fifty, correct? It would go, or discharged over to the.
Back, back then, it, it, you never had a pump station to get pumped out, so it was a back and forth.
So again, it would go back, it would go back according to the elevation.
Using the, across the north slope, four ponding area, and at the right time when the stations get caught up, it starts to come back.
Correct, correct. So now you don't have that though?
I guess the way I understand it, the city and one of the administrations, a long time ago. I don't know.
So who did it? Conservancy, did it have nobody?
I don't think so.
What year was it?
But there's no, but.
Hey Greg, can you come to the podium if you're gonna talk?
I've been asked to come up with, it, it wasn't turned into the core, it just, it just, it happened. And we don't have any information on it. All I had was the, the administration wanted.
We were told, and I say we, I was part of the administration.
Yeah.
That conservancy had it built full concrete and removed in order for the cap fields to be built. Because I noticed that according to the drawing here, it's right at the two ballparks where that ditch line went through. So in order to build cap field, they actually had to remove that sluice gate, and that's what it was called, sluice gate, I believe, wasn't it?
It's a sluice gate.
Yeah. And it shows that here going through the levee.
Which it did.
And it would've came out between the two ballfields over here. So the ditch line has been removed, filled and, so I guess the point I'm making is all that water is going through remedial, which is a five foot by six foot box. Correct. And we've had figures in that box before, I think, haven't we?
We actually, there was a bigger repair on that box by the license frame.
Correct, correct.
Which would have been part of the storm sewer.
Correct, correct. So my theory is, being as I own property down there, is that, and I think I'm right, the lowest elevation in the city, my finished floor of the basement there, if we lose that drainage through remedial because somebody plugged up that sluice gate, it's gonna be the first to flood if all that water comes down through there. Would you agree?
When you lose storage capacity, you get greater flooding.
So you lost the whole fairground area as, as storage, equalized storage, I'll call it. Would you agree?
That, that's been plugged, so that's no longer there.
Correct, correct. So would it be, would somebody to put another pumping mechanism to get it over or through the levee? If not, I mean, the school could flood, correct?
This is, we haven't fit, this is, this is, this is not the final interior drainage. This is only if a hundred year flood event happens, that's the flooding.
Okay.
What will be added into that is the seepage from the relief wells that are, there's a series of relief wells that get dumped into and those have an impact of increasing design.
But, but I think going to Mario's point, the ponding area inside the, inside the, over Todd Creech. We, we're, we're, on, on the city side of things, since that sluice gate was concreted in, took away, took, 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 took out a lot of water areas, if I can call it that.
Yes.
Ponding, ponding.
Pond. So. So what that does is hinders our new development, or our new development has to have all these other bells and whistles to neutralize any additional water, right?
Or the city has to look at the overall plans and say.
Right.
What can we do as a city to take care of that?
So I think Mario's got a, a point.
So, and can we even take away storm event? We don't need a hundred year storm event, let's be honest. If you turn remedial wall, if it loses its pumping capabilities, Paul, how long to take to fill up the bowl?
We've had storm events that puts water.
No, 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 no.
We, we have, we have a, a model that shows you how long, just a pre-sip event, how long it takes.
Yeah, you can chart it, you have charted.
Yeah, we, we've got that analysis done, it can show you how long it will take.
Other words, I'm gonna say within a day, you'll have water to the sidewalks in Todd Creech Park. Would you agree? Yeah, out of that five foot by six foot box.
You're saying if all the pumps fail?
Yeah.
We, we, we don't, we don't, we, we, we don't, we haven't finished the analysis that if you take all the pumps out, cause if you take all the pumps out, nothing goes out, right?
Right.
It fills up, so, but the pumps are worth.
Without a storm event. I'd say I'm on the dry Sunday day for a month.
You're absolutely right, Mario. If, if you turn off the pumps in Lawrenceburg, you can go over there, I don't know if it'll happen that quick, but you are one hundred percent right, it will rise.
Yes.
Now, I, I don't know depending on how high it'll rise because of the river level and the aquifer level, that's gonna have something to do with it.
Well, it's gonna treat more standing up.
Even though you don't have that, you're, you're right. There's days you can go over there and you can walk that sidewalk, back Water Street, and you can just see the sloppiness in the, in the waters that's coming up along the base.
We actually have video of it percolating up out of that.
So, so this is where what we're doing right now.
But I wanna get, I wanna get back to the sluice gate.
Yeah.
If that's the operation and you're saying there's no permit from the core to close it?
Should it be reopened?
Yeah.
Is it gravity? Is the sluice gate gravity?
It was gravity.
Yeah.
All that, all that's gonna come, and to be honest with you, men gone have had talks the last.
Best particularly.
Career.
So everybody have known this gate was concreted up?
Say it again.
But your board members knew the gate was concreted up?
I don't know if they did.
No, no, that's not true. Your attorney was on air, Dr. Richter was on air.
I mean, none of these guys were here today.
Well, maybe here, but I, that wouldn't question.
I, I might, I might add, we're, we're just now, I mean, we're in the midst of this ponding analysis and so.
Can you come to the, can you come up to the podium, please?
We're, we're just putting all the pieces together, with this ponding analysis kind of seeing, okay, what was it before? Where are we at now? Where the difference is? And this is, we're just focusing on this. So we're just now focusing on this kind of like, oh, what, we have to think of what was there.
But, but, but common sense would tell you, if you take away a ponding area, it's gotta go somewhere else.
Absolutely.
And, and this one was concreted in and you had this big area over there that was available and you don't have that available anymore, so it's gotta go somewhere else.
Exactly. And, and that's one of the things, it's, it's complicated, yeah, like in the original plans, it wasn't there, but then it showed up later and later plans on Army Corps. So we were in the process of, we were gonna send them an email, you know, in this week even, to, we're digging up more information on.
Have, have you asked the attorney and the people that were on, on the board, you know, how'd this happen?
That, we're just in the process.
We're, we're in the process of getting that information. All the state's got information.
They're, 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 they're on the board now.
Don't you do an annual inspection out of it?
Oh, we do, we do inspections all the time.
So one day it's there, the next day it's not. So one year it's there, following year it's not. And that didn't send up any red flags or concerns?
What year was that done?
When the ballfields were built.
Okay. The question, we, we've looked and trying to look at the history of that information and that's, that's literally what we're doing. I don't think anyone doubts that it happened. The question is, how, who did it?
The board's heard of it though, I would say.
I don't think, I wouldn't say this, I do not think.
Did you know?
The closing at sluice gate and plugging it up had anything to do with the cap field.
Yeah, I was.
There's no reason why they couldn't have built the cap fields.
It was before the cap fields. I would honor that. It was before the cap field.
But I have just a question.
Go ahead, Thomas.
I, I need some clarification here. So you, we're saying everything on that north side at levee in the fairgrounds still drains somewhere in Darby remedial station?
No, no.
Cause it.
It's been plugged.
Okay, it's been plugged.
Yeah.
So is it not being pumped with the pump station right at the fairgrounds?
No.
Why was it, why wouldn't it have been, if we had that ponding there and we plugged it off at the levee, that water had to go somewhere and when they filled in the ditch line, I often thought that all that water would go to that pump station and be pumped.
Tommy, it, it is supposed to, but the easiest way to sum these two problems up is, guys, there's, there's been mistakes made in the past. And all of us sitting in this room, we can, we can actually sit back and talk about what happened twenty years ago.
We're moving forward. That's the way I feel.
Yeah.
I, I don't care about the past.
Well, but, but right now, we're the ones that have to deal with what was done.
Okay.
I don't know who did it, you hear the stories, but the thing is, is, is we're closing in on a ponding area analysis and it will be turned over to the core. It just is a problem that's gonna have to be dealt with.
So we take that into consideration, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Cause I see also, it's picking up water from George Street Park area too?
Well, you know, the sluice gate ain't the only problem. We, we've made ballfields, we, we've built, we've made, we've put schools in ponding.
Yep.
We've done a lot.
Sure.
And that's what I'm saying about, okay, who are we gonna look out here or are we just gonna take this issue and John's gonna come to the conclusion and we're gonna have some options? We're, we're, we're at that point, we're hitting close.
So, so part of this big issue right now, for clarification again, is ponding areas that we've dealt away with. So in them ponding areas, you're saying, is it coming down to where we're gonna need more pumping systems to pump it not through our storm water and somewhere else?
Two on, or two off, we're gonna be looking at all that, obviously. You have too big of a ponding area, then the question is, how do you reduce it, right? Here's the other thing I'll bring up. We're looking at, you have to look at the stability of the levee too. If the relief wells everywhere aren't perfect and you need to put in some limited areas of new relief wells, what will those relief wells do? They'll increase flow to those relief wells, they'll be better relief wells. What will that do? Add water.
True.
To your system.
Yeah.
Which may require pumping or may require a bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, ponding area. So all those, this is all tied together. And so that's, that's exactly what we're doing.
So you would look at alternative pumping out of that bowl possibly to Tanner's Creek via another street or whatever else, possibly, correct?
We'll look at, that'll be one option. If you have too much water, okay, here's the, increase the pumping capacity option. Here's the, uh, we're gonna increase the storage area option. What does that mean? Unplug the, unplug the pathway and let it come up and then you deal with Greendale. Cause it's, it's, it's tied to Greendale too. Cause they're doing analysis now, uh, even with their own ponding, you know, their capacities for their. Cause they're doing analysis now, uh, even with their own ponding, you know, their capacities for their pond. So it's, it's a, I think it's all tied together. So we'll look, we're looking at all of those, but it's a confluence of ponding area, pumping capacity and safety of the levees, so.
I got a question, uh, speaking of Greendale. What are they doing on Long Ridge Avenue back here behind the fairgrounds? I seen, is it all new storm sewer? Is that all the water from?
I ain't.
That's just a sidewalk, it's just a sidewalk.
Walkway.
It's a walkway going down to Levy.
Yeah.
That's a walk.
Well, they got pipes, cement pipes putting in.
I didn't see no pipes. Oh, are you talking about next to our, to our, uh?
The shop?
There's some house sitting there.
No, this is back behind where the horse stables used to be, you know, where we used to rabbit hunt. Remember the cat fields?
Yeah.
Cattail fields, all of that?
That's just a walking trail.
Yeah.
That's just a walking trail.
And there ain't, I don't think, unless they put them out there.
There may be some half pipe, just one through those drainage ditches back here. I think it's a walking trail.
Just maybe to cover the, over the pipes.
Okay, I was wondering if the storm sewer water can release it down there?
Might just be culled as they cross the trail.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is the last slide, this is a great discussion because as you can tell from discussions, it's a very aware discussion. How we handle if we don't need certain requirements, we'll, we'll need to look at alternatives. And we'll look at all of those. And if we haven't thought of all the alternatives, people have a, an ability to comment of what else we could consider, but we'll, we'll try to look at those. But it really comes down to where the ultimate ponding area is, how to relieve that or not relieve that, how to increase pumping, uh, capacities out of Lawrenceburg and also how to keep your levees safe through all that. Whether we need, uh, new relief wells, uh, capacities in some locations based on, on the, the high water event. So this is, this is literally what we're doing this quarter, these, these next, uh, several months. So, so how still have we been going? Well, we've been going through methodically over the last decade, gathering the data to get to this point so that we make good decisions. If we hadn't gathered all this data, all the water level data, the rehab data, we would be guessing at some of this.
Yeah.
You may be spending millions of dollars in places you don't need to spend or, or not spending enough. So that's kind of where we're at. That's all we have to say, but if you have any questions about.
Go ahead, Tom.
Would, we have Durbin Plaza, everyone's aware of, over by the bowling alley. And we're looking to develop that in the future. Is that gonna hinder us doing anything with that? I mean, is someone gonna say, back off of that for a little bit? I know I spoke with Paul when they were doing Whiskey River and you were showing me how they were doing the retention area for the water runoff air.
Well, the one thing we've got right now, we got a ponding area analysis and a ponding area that is an elevation that was established by the Corps. So that elevation puts us at a, on a map. The map that we use right now and any permit that you, let's say you would start on that tomorrow and you wanna put it in and I gotta turn it in to the Corps to see if everything goes. They're gonna use the ponding analysis that was from nineteen eighty, is, if that's the latest one, which, which is gonna take that area and there'll be a red flag. What we're hoping is, is when John gets his analysis done, that'll all change. But keep this in mind, once he's done, it's gotta get turned in. They have to look at it, they'll have to accept it and then it'll go into a situation where Johnny will, will have it in his planning and zoning and at that point, we'll have more things very set to where we'll know what to do. And it ain't gonna happen really, really quick, timing on it.
Yeah, we're talking this year, really.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you was to say the end of the year, I'd hope you could hold to that. But it seems like every time we turn around, we, you know, something backs you up a little bit. But before we are done, I would like to say one thing. The Corps, we do an inspection every year. Uh, they, they'll do an inspection every year and then every five years they'll do a critical, a, a in-depth inspection. So this year we just got it, they're working on it. Uh, the last one we did, we probably had fifty, sixty check boxes on it and we had two X's. Uh, I think that the Corps will back us up. We're, we, I mean, my theory is, is you come and do an inspection on us any day you want. We work on it all year round, my guys keep things good. They're gonna walk in, I don't have to prepare for an inspection. I, we try to keep and my directors, uh, let me spend the money to keep things up. So I feel like we're ready all the time, but I've been around a long time and when you have inspections, you're gonna get told, hey, you need to fix these things. Right now, we've got a couple of things we've been working on, we, we work on with them and we're trying, we, we try to turn those things around and turn them into John and do them and take care of them. I think this Lawrenceburg levee is in really, really good shape. Really good shape. But the one thing you gotta understand is, is if we got one X on that inspection, that, that's a, that's something, the Corps wants us to be perfect and we strive for it. I think they think a lot of us, but their, their grading system, if you guys get on the internet and you look, it, it's, uh, it's a little tough when you look at it, but I think, and, and I've been told, I, I do think we got one of the best levees in their system. Uh, a lot of the difference is, is, is some of these levees that are in better shape possibly are federally managed with federal money. A lot of the private levees and the sponsors, they don't have any money. You're absolutely right, they, they don't have any and they struggle. I've been to the conventions, I, I don't miss any of that. Some of these guys struggle to be able to pay the bush hogger levees once or twice a year. We're continuously going around these things and, and you guys might think, well, they, they cut a lot of grass, but you'd be surprised at what benefit this town gets out of those guys being on that mower and rounding this town once a week because there's usually not a month that goes by to where somebody won't call me and say, hey, there's a boarding machine over here getting ready to, or getting ready to bore somewhere on levee. Look, they patrol this levee, they see the groundhogs, they see the people working on it, they see the people digging the ditch. We've got, right now, we're working on telephone poles, which by the way, the city was very helpful on all that. We, we might have a project out of that that comes up. But those are the kind of things that because this area has got money and we can do these things, we notice a lot and there's a lot that doesn't happen on our levee that might if we, if we didn't have that ability. So.
I'm gonna, any questions from the group before? I got a couple of questions I wanna just finish with.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, Josh.
I just wanna, is, is the, developing the ponding area, is that the next critical step element in establishing our accreditation? Is that, is that kind of the next step?
It is a key step. It's, it's combined because of the complexity of Lawrenceburg with all the relief wells surrounding it, that whatever the rainfall comes and, and the high water comes at the same time or probabilities coming, they all contribute to that same interior drainage. But that's not the only thing because once we figure out how much they're contributing, we look at the levee system and look at the pressures beneath the levee and if they are, they're excessive, they're unacceptable under a high water mark. So, so I would say the interior drainage is a key factor, but also the levee stability is also a factor. So it, right now, it's all tied together.
Yeah.
Once we do one, everything comes from, it, it, we get all the answers.
Yeah, makes sense.
So we're, we're gonna make, uh, significant progress and finish this, this, this year to understand what the big picture is. Okay, what does that all mean? Oh, wow. We're either great and don't do a thing or, you know, here's, here's the list of things, the options we have to make it right. And I'm assuming there's, uh, there'll be a lot of public feedback to this because it's, it's the ponding area.
Sure.
And, and there's different ways to address them, so.
So if we can keep, if we can alleviate as much of the pressure, the usage in the ponding areas is gonna help with even the hydrostatic pressure inside of the bowl, you know, for our community? Cause we had this event in twenty eighteen, cause we had the high water event and then, which, the pressure was on and then we had a heavy rain event, all of our basements filled up with water.
Well, two eighteen's didn't have that much rainfall compared to what.
I don't, it was, but it was just a quick rain event, like a three or four.
It happened at the same time.
It, it, it just happened at the same time, we had a three or four inch rain, couple hours, and the, the water came up through all of our basements.
Right.
So I mean, it was just.
We just couldn't discharge, I mean, it's just a pump less than enough.
I've been, I've been telling John the last two days, actually, that sometimes over on St. Clair, the fire department will get called to do two, maybe three hot homes in a row and then the other one's on the outside of it, one, I mean, hanging in basements at all.
And in fact, what we're getting, the, the, we, we didn't talk about all the great science and engineering we're doing behind the scenes, but when our, our model results come in, we may be coming to people in Lawrenceburg and say, hey, what are you observing on the street? Oh, yes, exactly what we predicted. So that, that's how we're getting to the point where we might be able to get specific feedback when the, when we run these, your results and say, this is why you've been seeing this over here and not over here. So Luke and I were going through the city today, it's like, you're talking, now you see the city as a big map looking your head and you're looking at different areas and you look where you think ponding areas would happen or maybe where high water happens.
But this is, I mean, this is the first time that we've had to have tons of discussions about ponding over the last few years. Is cutting off the fairgrounds, ponding area, is that the only change we've made to ponding recently? Or have there been other areas where we've reduced ponding or sealed up gates or sealed off areas where nor, where ordinarily there'd be more ponding?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say the answer, that's no on the gates, on, on any mechanical equipment. However, uh, dirt, fill, the parks, we've done fill. You've actually, you know, we've done fill in the Todd Creek area. We've, uh, we've done fill across fifty over there to the bottom end of the school cause I can, there's, there's been a lot of changes over there. So, and, and we've also done some fill over at George.
George Street.
Yeah. So there's been, and that's what I mean when I say, you know, I sit here, point no finger to go backwards. It's just, what are we gonna do? Go take all that out? I mean, I, I can remember, um, a year and a half, two years ago, when I took you and Bonnie down there, even though we have changed that area, I mean, they complimented it. It, it's like, the numbers are gonna tell us that we're gonna have to do a report, but I'm not saying it was bad because Tony would need you grew up. There, it was a slew of them, one of them boys called on fire and it was just a, it, it's so much better. We just gotta figure out, what are we gonna do? And we're, we're close. You know, I like, I, I hope we're close.
So, I mean, but we're gonna add ponding, we can't just not build anything in, in Lawrenceburg? I mean, we have to add ponding, right?
Ponding or pump stations or?
Pump stations.
Pump stations.
Yeah, you gotta get rid of.
And that, and that's just John, and that's why, you know, that, that, honestly, this is why we spent the millions of dollars to, to come, come to some of these conclusions over the years and it has been years, I mean, we, we've been on this pretty hard.
You're stating the study will be completed, you think, at the end of this year?
I think by the time you get through all the analysis and, and go through much stuff, it, it's gonna take forever.
Now, we, will we get a copy of that study to review as well?
It'll be public information, I mean, it's, you know.
The thing I, I wanna, I hope to leave you with is very obvious here that any individual development, if not done properly, can impact everyone.
And that's what I was gonna ask the question. Should we work in tandem about our storm planning with you?
Yeah.
Before you come up with a?
Absolutely. I think Johnny's been great since he's been on, he's, he's, he's called and he's done things. But yeah, you're, you're right, Mario. I mean, I think we need to, uh, I don't, you know, I, I love all these questions today. I mean, this is great, I like the communication.
Exactly.
Um, it's, it's something we need to do, we, we need to, it's, it's a together project. It's not, you know, everybody needs to know about it, so.
Tony?
I got a question. Greendale levee, it's not the same flood height as, say, the Lawrenceburg levee.
Greendale levee is a FEMA levee, the Lawrenceburg levee is a Corps levee. Your Lawrenceburg levee is a five hundred year protection and the FEMA is a one hundred.
Okay, that, will that affect the Lawrenceburg levee getting certified or accredited?
Uh, this, this Lawrenceburg levee and the Corps of Engineers, they can speak with it, but we, we focus on the Lawrenceburg system. On, when we're talking to you today here, we're focused on the Lawrenceburg system and that Greendale system has nothing to do with what we're trying to accreditate.
That's, that was, that was my question. Is it two different systems and would that Greendale levee affect the Lawrenceburg levee being accredited? And you just answered that, so, great.
But you're the conservancy for Greendale and Lawrenceburg levee there, right? It's, is, you govern both levees?
We're, both maintain each levee.
Okay.
So what it, what specifically is wrong with our levee? Why couldn't it be accredited right now by the Army Corps?
We haven't finished all the analysis. The analysis says the levees are safe, they won't, they won't, uh, they won't fail during a high water event. The levee itself, we haven't finished the final analysis. We haven't finished whether we can pull enough water out of there to make them safe. So the final analysis has to be completed to provide, that's why we had documentation that says this will, uh.
But you tried to get it accredited and they said no, and now you have to.
Now here's the thing, no, no.
They didn't, they didn't say no. They didn't say have to.
No, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so to my, to my last couple of questions, um, so, so you expect the, the report to be done end of the year? Okay, so whatever comes out of that report then, accreditation cannot happen until those things are completed. Is that correct? Or they can accredit your, they can accreditate your levee based upon your plan?
First off, I, I don't think the Corps would have been too.
Accredit, or whatever your number, name is.
John's, John's the one's gonna sign off on it.
Yeah.
FEMA's the one that, that we need to, you know, they're gonna make the phone call and say, hey, okay, we're ready for a phone call. Where are you guys at? Here's, the other thing they said at the end of this is that we have all the paperwork and everything was on the internet, but the last thing the fellow said was, is, you know, we might have something else we throw in the mix. We don't know what they're gonna want. We're, we're not one hundred percent sure, but the day they call us at that point, depending on how, you know, the, the one thing that I guarantee won't happen is, is, hey, I'm glad you called. We haven't done a thing since we heard from you. That didn't happen.
Right.
I, 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 yeah, I can appreciate everything you guys have done.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Obviously, because you don't, you've done a lot.
Yeah.
But, but what I'm asking is, when, who is going to stamp the Lawrenceburg levee? Is that Army Corps? No, I, I understand that on the work, I get that. But who is gonna give the ultimate, say? I don't, my, my, my folks down here don't have to worry about flood insurance ever.
That will be FEMA, that, that's not a Corps function.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, exactly. And the way the process works, so if, if they submit their package to FEMA and there's a few missing things, it's not just a, a no. They'll come back and say, okay, this is your submittal, there's a few things here or there that you need to provide us for. It's a, a process between them, but yeah, FEMA will be the one, John has to sign, put his PE on the line.
Sure.
An engineer that did the analysis that backs it up and FEMA will be the one that says, yes, this, this levee is accredited.
And, but what I'm asking is, when they come back and say, okay, you, 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 you find out that, hey, uh, we gotta add this, we gotta develop an additional ponding area, do those things have to be done before FEMA accredits? Or?
Correct.
So it's, it, this could be a very long process.
Right.
Even going fo, even going forward.
Like, I think you're about to say, the good news is you're provisionally accredited right now.
Right, but.
It's not like you aren't. And I, I get it, we don't work for FEMA, that's why I don't want to speak.
No, I get it.
But I don't, if you submit a package and you're missing a few things, I can imagine it's gonna take away the provisional.
No, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't think so.
A better response to the levees that aren't accredited at all, cause it can be a, it can be a long process.
Right, and, and one of the things that FEMA talks about on these phone calls too is, uh, whatever package gets submitted, submitted, reviewed by them, they say, you have these issues that you need to take care of.
Sure.
But we can't accredit you right now. It still is gonna take them like three or four months, maybe six months for them to do their own study to show what has to change on the flood insurance rate maps before they can then come back to the city and the community and say, this is what the new map is gonna look like because you aren't accredited.
Okay.
And at any given time during that six month timeframe or whatever it is, if the city repairs and finishes. And at any point in time during that six month timeframe, or whatever it is, if the city repairs and finishes that work that needs to be done and submits it, they will stop and then go back and reanalyze what's submitted. So, it's not something that the city, the city needs to, the city and L C D need to continue to work towards getting that accreditation.
Sure.
And whenever, whenever that work is done, when they submit that to FEMA, FEMA then will go back and revise their footage or freight maps based on what the city's.
Okay, my last question, and I'm sorry for monopolizing this, but as you two are standing up here, um, from the Army Corps' perspective, what shape is our levee in?
I do, um, you have a, a great levee. Your L C D staff takes really good care of levees. We wanna get as great as we can, but just from a, it's a good, to answer your question, some ways, a good levee is in good shape.
What is the rating?
It's a little, so this levee system, and this could be a long story if you wanna hear. The levee, our, the Army Corps has three ratings. Acceptable, minimally acceptable, and unacceptable. That's all there is. There is no, you're one or the other. This levee is technically in an unacceptable state right now. It is actually being, we just did a routine inspection in March. That rating is being discussed at higher levels because you have a very, very specific scenario. So we, when we rate our levee systems, we have a checklist that we have to follow. There are eighteen items that if any of those items are considered unacceptable, we have no say that the levee system has to be in an unacceptable rating. It's one of our eighteen critical interim items.
All or nothing?
All or nothing, exactly. So, you have one of those items that is unacceptable and it's not necessarily a fault to L C D, to you all. It's kind of an unfortunate circumstance. You have the gravity drains that come from the pump stations or where the pump pumps into these culverts, that since the construction of Markland Dam, they're all submerged. Since they're submerged, you've had a lot of difficulties video inspecting the pipes. Obviously, they're full of water, it's difficult. This is a hard thing. Previous leadership in the Corps has been pretty adamant, 'cause pipe inspections is one of those eighteen items that, sorry, I know we, the Markland Dam was our construction, but you need to figure out a way to get those inspected. L C D's done a lot to try. They've done, they've tried sonar, they've tried inspecting the portions that aren't submerged. They haven't had a lot of luck. Now, like I just said, we just had a routine inspection and we do have new leadership in the Army Corps, so this is being rediscussed. Right, literally right now, we're gonna have a meeting next week about it. We have a, a rating that, you know, again, we're, it's gonna be discussed. It's, it's, I, I wanna say unfortunate circumstances, really unique circumstances. Unique in the way we do have other levee systems throughout the Corps that have the exact same situation, and we're discussing all of them.
Wouldn't you say it's your damn, your problem?
Because, yes, and that's been brought up. I, I've argued it, you know, I wish I, I, I wish I had.
Never thought of it that way. It's pretty good.
Right, so, so that, that is correct. It is our, it is, you know, there, the, the Corps has its own liabilities associated with that. But also, as far as the rating is concerned, we have a responsibility to explain to the public the situation associated with the levee system and the fact that the pipes haven't been inspected. And so we have to rate that and make sure that the public is aware of that.
And just to let you guys know, we, we have made some attempts, but we haven't gave up. Matter of fact, I have RISO engineering right now. Uh, two, two of our outfalls, I, I think I can put some coffer dams in, some sheet piling. Uh, one of them will be out around Station Three in the chimney area, the other one's at Station One, uh, we're in this area garage. We're actually putting together a, a bid package right now to see if we can do a, a, a coffer dam situation where we can get in there, pump, pump water out and do this. Then, I don't know that that, that'll do it or not, because the other two are in the middle of Tanner's Creek.
Get your diving gear on.
Are they underneath probably ten feet of water, but what, what, Jared, my memory here, how deep, how much silt's on them and how much water? Were we talking fourteen feet probably?
Thirty's fourteen feet, yeah. Uh, two X's, there's no silt, two X's.
Yeah. So, so we're, we didn't just walk away from it. These guys know that. We're working on it, we're trying to make it happen, but that's why I brought up the fact that so, you know, we got one or two X's and we're trying awful hard, but.
So, and, and let me, let me speak real quick too also. The, the Corps has a lot of issue with what we're, what we're talking about here. We don't know the reason that we're concerned with the inspection of those pipes is because the status of the pipes is unknown.
Right.
Right? So, we're not saying that this, that the pipes are bad. We don't know what the status is. That's why we're asking for the inspection to be placed. So, when you ask the question, what is the status of the system, what do we rate it? We have to rate it negatively because the status is unknown.
Got it.
So, if, we could do this inspection and find out there's nothing wrong, and, and all along the status was fine. But right now, the rating is the way that it is because it's an unknown.
Okay.
Who else?
The problem that the Corps, the problem that the Corps has when we, when we talk about this is, we have to look at flood risk nationally.
Yeah.
One of the things that we are concerned with is making sure that cities aren't spending excessive amounts of money to do these inspections when there may be other things that they should be spending their money on, flood risk stamping.
Priorities.
So, that's where some of that delicate balance comes in.
Okay.
Like Cory said, we're in discussions internally as far as how we wanna talk about the flood risk associated with, uh, Lawrenceburg's levee system.
Okay.
Who inspects the levee besides Army Corps, our levee?
L C D.
L C D, yes.
Do you inspect it, or do you just, they inspect it and you review their inspection?
I inspect it.
Yeah, both. I would say both.
No, yeah, they do their own inspections.
They do their own inspections. We also inspect it, and we review our inspections and their inspections.
Let me ask you this.
By the way, one thing just on the screen, I, we've been out there before when the pumps are operating and they pump out the water from, uh, Lawrenceburg, and you can see the water getting out, so it's not like the water isn't.
Right.
Getting out in during two thousand eighteen, it got out, so, but, but they insist on, and still trying to figure out the visual inspection, the details to confirm that, I mean, those drains are, are culverts, triple reinforced, uh, pipes. They're, they're, they're very stout, but we just haven't been able to see all the through.
For clarification, are the, are we talking about the discharge piping from the pump houses?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and like what he said, that's part of our, what our discussion will be. Hey, if we can't get these video inspections, what other benefits? We can see the water being pumped out physi, physically.
Right.
We can inspect the ground above it to see if there's depressions that we're losing. So, those are discussions we've had. In the past, we've been very, almost black and white. That was on the checklist. You didn't meet it. We have to go with an unacceptable rating. Now, we do.
New leadership, you got maybe a new way to, yeah.
And the Corps as a whole, I think, wants to look at things more risk-based, just like David said. We need to, we need to think about the rest of the levee system. Does it make sense for you all to build these coffer dams and visually inspect them, or are there more, have a higher risk that you should be spending your money on?
Right, good point.
We're trying to work on that more and look at a risk-based approach for it, so.
Question, Lenny?
Uh, the pipes you was talking about under Tanner's Creek, is it in the water or is it under, underground, under Tanner's Creek? You know, the pipes you talking about, it's submerged like ten foot under Tanner's Creek. Is it in the water or is it in the mud?
Is that those cement things coming up out of the creek?
That's clean stream probably you're talking about.
The, the best way I can tell you guys to get a visual of what we got is if, if you go over and look at remedial in that same, you, you got remedial down behind the, the, the city garage there.
Mm-hmm.
You can see it. There's a wing wall and there's a discharge that's, that's up because remedial was built after the dams. But then when you go to the right, when the, when it pumps out, you're gonna see a bunch of water coming up. Well, you, you're gonna have probably six, eight feet of water and then six, eight feet of muck. That silt that's just came in on it. So you're gonna have a combination of both.
As soon as it quit pumping, it sucks the silt.
Sucks it right back.
Yeah.
And that's at Station One you're talking about?
We, we got Station One.
And I'm just saying, what you referenced two were remedials discharging and were Station One discharging.
They're side by side.
Okay, that's where, yeah.
About twenty, thirty feet of water.
Only, only reason I was asking that, Satch, is if, uh, if it was underwater, couldn't they, somebody go in like a scuba diver or something and inspect that for you guys without having to, they could dry?
Yeah.
If it's under mud, you can't do it.
Yeah.
Well, you could get you a big diver suit, go down there with a shovel.
Lenny will be right by you too. Okay.
So I'm assuming these have one-way valves?
Check valves.
Check valves, the water goes out but can't come back in. Is that something that obviously that you're, we're able to, are we able to monitor and maintain those as well?
Or is it in the pump?
Yeah.
Not even such, a check valve in the pump house or anything?
But not, it's not on the end of the discharge.
Yeah, not on the pipe.
Yeah, but there's sluice gates in those gate wells.
Here's, here's the top of the water. Here's the silt line. Here's the pipe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, after it forced that out and you turn it off, the silt sucks back into the nosing of the pipe.
I got that. Yep, yep, yeah, following you. Yep.
Okay, yeah, Greg.
I just wanna say, I'm a member, but I'm not, uh, uh, representing the board. I just wanna say, I specifically wanna thank you guys for accepting our invitation to come talk. I think it's been very helpful and I appreciate it. And also wanna let you know, the third Thursday, I know you've been, that's every month at six thirty, you'll need it. I know there's been there, Lenny's been there, wanna have a project or something, you need our help on. But if you wanna come, and I'd all, also like to say, if we could maybe have another meeting six months from now, eight months from now like this, to keep everybody on board. If you know of an issue, come see it. Don't wait ten, fifteen years. We mentioned, we'll, we'll do everything we can, but I think we need to let John do his job, tell us what we need to do and work with the Corps. Thank you guys for coming. And Luke, John, thanks for coming, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg. Um, and, and I guess, so this is gonna be an ongoing thing for you guys at your meetings and such. And, and I, I'm, I guess I'm asking selfishly, and I don't know how the rest of this group feels, I, I, I appreciate the education today.
Oh, yes.
Um, it was very helpful for me, but I, I, is there any way, because, yeah, we, we do have a lot of meetings, we have a lot of other events going on and stuff. Any way you could at least record your meetings, even if it's not video? That way we can, 'cause all, all we get to, what, every, anything I get to read is only in the minutes. And a lot of things get, we, we take minutes, but we also video and audio record our meetings, and a lot gets lost in translation. So.
The Board, the Board will, I'm sure we'll, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that, no one's talking, everyone in our meeting, either in person or Zoom in, you know, and he brings us up to date on both.
Yep, absolutely.
So, yeah, it is nice to hear from him, and he's bringing us up to date, and a lot of it right now obviously is the ponding, because that's, this is the last piece he's trying to put together. And, uh, believe me, we're all on him. John, get this done, get this done. You know, we need it so that we can share it with everyone and make a plan. And, uh, like Greg said, we appreciate, you know, being here and, you know, John bringing his expertise and letting you know where he's at.
Yeah.
And I think everybody on the Board is working very hard to get this accomplished.
No, I, I don't think anybody's questioned you guys, but the, the, the effort that's being made. I, I, like I said, today enlightened me a lot. I mean, personally, I'm sure it did the rest of the Board and everybody else in attendance. What I'm saying though is now that we know about all this, I'd like to keep informed, and I think the best way was if, if we could, you know, if we can't attend your meetings, how else are we supposed to get the information? You know what I mean? And I agree with Greg. I like to have the meeting every six months. We, we're doing that with other groups as well, and I think it's an excellent way to do it. Uh, we're doing with even our redevelopment group, you know? Um, but if there's any way you guys, it, you, I'm not even talking about video, just audio. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can't speak for other.
You know, and I know, um, Del brought up, and everybody wants to see something accomplished, you know, and you want answers. And we want the answers. But it seems like as soon as we get close, the goalpost moves.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And then they're asking for something different. Well, then you change gears and you get John involved in something new that's come up. And we have to address that immediately. So, it's constant moving and we're trying to address it as fast as we can.
That makes it difficult to be proactive when that's.
Well, and then you don't wanna start, like John mentioned several times, you don't wanna go out and spend millions of dollars.
You didn't have to.
On doing something, and FEMA says, oh, no, well, you didn't need to do that.
Yeah.
Wait till the timeline starts, give us a direction, and then we're gonna work on it.
Yeah. Good point.
So.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you guys asking. Haven't, I, I got educated today. I really did. This has been really in, interesting.
And, you know, maybe we don't need to wait six months. Maybe we need to do it in three months.
Yeah.
But, um, and to keep really everybody accountable, hey, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, and we've got a great group at the Corps working with us.
Yeah.
You know, so, and you, you know, once you heard from them, we're trying to do everything that we can possibly do to be proactive, but, um, it's very, very expensive. Everything that we do is, you know, it's not twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, it's two hundred thousand. You know?
We know.
So it's not.
We agree, we agree. We agree.
Yeah, make your expense.
Yeah.
I appreciate it a lot.
We appreciate you guys keeping it safe down here.
One last thing I'd like to say, and I'll just use these discharges as an example. Y'all ain't got away with a week to call me. If, if one of you guys wants to go on a tour and see a pump station, if, if, for instance, right now, if, uh, one of you wanna come over and say, hey, Satch, can you show me the discharges? Hell, I can get some blueprints out, I can show you how they're made, I can show you the elevations, I can take you over and show you the obstacles we're facing. That's my job. If you guys call me at any time and you wanna know something or you wanna look at something we got, we'll set up a meeting anytime you want. You don't have to do it as a group. If one of you guys got time on a certain day that you can do anything, just give me a holler.
Will do.
We'll set something up. It don't have to be nothing planned, you know, we, we'll, it's, we're, we're an open book.
Do I, does that mean I get to ride in your golf cart? The mayor won't let me ride in his.
Hell, we'll put you in scooter.
With a shovel?
All right. Okay, this is going south. Um, I wanna thank everybody. John, thank you today. Tori, John, thanks for coming down from the Army Corps. We appreciate you guys and gals. And, uh, Council, thanks for making time today to come out. I think it was a worthwhile hour and forty-five minutes. We try to get our meetings over in an hour, by the way. But, uh, but this was a great, great discussion, so, uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Well, you beat me to that, Brett. You jumped on that. You beat me to that, didn't you?
These mints didn't last that long.